Good evening, everyone. The June 11th, 2024 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Measuring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me.
I didn't go on the screen.
No, I just put it there.
But her did her.
Oh, no, I didn't put it up yet.
Okay.
Because I was going to go here.
Thank you. I'll now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. If we work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put children first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Board Clerk. Please call the roll.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Gullett. Would you please introduce the person on your team who will share inspiration and help lead our Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Great to see you tonight. Yes, I'm pleased to have Dr. Brewer come forward, who's going to introduce some very special students from Bellevue Middle School who are carrying some very impressive trophies, just to give you a hint. Glad to have our students here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Brewer.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Thrower, dear members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I have the privilege of introducing the Bellevue Middle School Robotics Teams. And I said "teams" because there are a few of them tonight. They attended the Robofest World Championship on May 9th through May 11th at Lawrence Technological University in Southfield, Michigan. The teams were led by their coach, Anthony Ness, who could not be with us this evening. He's actually flying in, but he's not going to arrive until 10:30, so he will watch this later. And assistant coach Lori Root. Twenty-one students made up seven teams that advanced to the Robofest World Championship, and the teams competed in five categories. Bellevue Middle School teams competed alongside over 200 teams from over 20 countries. Bellevue Middle School students represented their school, district, and community incredibly well. They showed dedication to expanding their STEM knowledge while showing respect for all. They interacted with students and coaches from all around the world and learned about other cultures. Bellevue teams finished as follows. So what I will do is I'm going to call out your teams, but then Ms. Root will call you individually to the front, and then you can stand at that time, and then you can face the members of our school board. Okay? So RoboMed team finished in third place. Unknown Mission Challenge teams all finished in the top 15, with three of the four teams finishing in the top 10. Game team finished in the top 20. Exhibition teams finished in seventh and ninth place. And RoboCat Medium Tigers earned first place People's Choice Award. And Sumo Bottle Bot teams all finished in the top 10. RoboCat Links earned first place in Sumo Time Trials. Did I get that right, guys? Okay. I hope so, because that would be hard to say. Let's give it a round of applause. All right. So now I'd like Ms. Lori Root to come to the podium to introduce the students, and then we have a few students that will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at that point. Ms. Root?
So first, the two young ladies that'll be leading our pledge is Madeline Vandalon and Jureli Lazada Lopez. You can bring your trophies and stuff. Up next, in no particular order, is Vlad Nygaard, Eric Schut, Sebastian Neely, Blake Ritz, Blake Lewis, Braden Hargrove, Cohen Mediers, Logan Arnold, Kyler Mitchell, Jeffrey DeBerry, Yurik Latimer Ferreira, Zachary Teetz, Justin Rich, and Ian Hogan. And also not able to be here tonight on the teams was Violet Messenger, Derek Dineser, Lance Erdley, Rohan Gupta, Wiley Bethia, and Zachary Bacard. Thank you.
Do the pledge. Come here. So we're going to do the pledge while everyone's standing. Okay, and then we'll come down and take a picture afterwards. Come here, sweetie. Come here. Oh, sorry. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, if you would just turn around so we can give you some compliments before we come down and take a picture with you. Thank you so much. We are so proud of you, and we're so grateful for the time and the effort and the passion that you have and the willingness and support of your families and everyone out there that loves you, your teachers that really care about you and your success. And how much fun that must have been to be able to go all the way up to Michigan and compete in this way, doing what you love with a bunch of other kids from 20 countries. That's pretty amazing. What a great opportunity, huh? So we're happy to have you here tonight. Thank you for taking time out of your busy evening. And to all of the families and friends out there that support these great kids, we just couldn't appreciate you enough and keep up the great work. Way to represent Marion County Public Schools and yourselves. So we're going to come down and take a quick picture, all right? Okay. [applause]
And oh, that was pretty weak. One, two, three.
Robotic!
Y'all can stand up if you want.
Parents, you're welcome to take photos. Yes, absolutely.
Lots of cameras.
Look at all those proud parents.
Keep smiling.
Good job, good job.
There was a smatter. Come on, everybody. Don't look so gloomy. There we go. One more.
Hey, y'all don't have to sit. If you're... Parents, y'all can take that. You can leave the discussion unless you want to sit. You're welcome, George.
They're all lit up. Hey, guys, I think you're... If you want to...
I was like, um...
Right now.
I think she said...
Guys, you're back.
You can leave.
Wait, so...
We could have had Victor come and take a picture with us, too.
What do I do with this?
Just give it to me.
Yes, I said, "No, see."
It was probably the kid sitting next to me, the little one.
It was Zachary.
So...
Ms. Root, where do I put these?
Out there.
Nice to see so many happy people. I also understand they had to do quite a bit of fundraising to make this happen, so the community really stepped up to help support these robotic teams, too. So great stuff. All right, take care, everybody. Have a great summer. All right, we will move on to recognize some donations. At this time, we would like to recognize donations the district recently received. $4,440.25 to Dr. N.H. Jones from Dr. N.H. Jones Parent Organization to support their media needs. $1,000 to Bellevue Middle School from Bellevue American Legion Post Number 284 to support the Bellevue Middle School Robotics Program. So they just got another $1,000 as they're heading out. All right, Dr. Gullett, would you please make a recommendation on tonight's school board meeting agenda?
Happy to do so. Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 11th, 2024 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items: D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, and D-24.11 that have been placed under discussion, as well as item C-19.1 that has been pulled, and it's been placed under the Discussion-Pulled Agenda Items section. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 14th, 2024 school board meeting?
Move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 21st, 2024 special school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell. Second by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the... Please provide the proof for publication for tonight's school board meeting?
The notice for the June 11th, 2024 board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on May 31st, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We'll move on now to persons requesting to address the board. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board meeting this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available at the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at a televised portion... At the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting, parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will move on then to our public hearing. May I have a motion to adopt the 2024-2025 Student Progression Plan?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 2024-2025 Student Progression Plan will reflect the changes in legislation in order to be in compliance with Section 1008.25 of the Florida statutes, as well as Board Policy 5410 to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2024-2025 Student Progression Plan? Hearing none. Any discussion from the board?
Hearing none.
We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. The Student Progression Plan has passed. All right, next we'll move on to some informational items. The school district uses a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, known as GMP, to perform construction on these projects. There were unused funds on these projects. Since the projects were delivered using a construction management delivery with a GMP format, unused dollars, regardless of the items, are returned to the owner. The unspent monies will be returned to the owner via change orders, which will close the financial books on the phases of these projects. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change orders that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval shall be, in his or her judgment, in the best interest of the board. Such change orders shall be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that he or she approved to the board at the board meeting that follows his or her approval. The superintendent's approval of the change orders shall be entered into the official minutes of the board meeting. The first one is Amendment Number 1. This is Agenda Item 10.1 to the Construction Manager Contract Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP for Equipment Early Procurement Related to Construction of New Elementary School X, Change Order Number 1, Amendment Number 1, Project 24-102. The next one is Construction of a Security Fencing System at Marion Technical Institute, known as MTI, Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 10, Project 23-131. The next one is Purchase of Generator for Data Center Building, Change Order Number 1, Work Authorization Number 4, Project 23-133. And that concludes the informational items on the Guaranteed Maximum Price projects. Next, we have Marion Technical College Applied for the Adult Education and Family Literacy Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education, known as IELCE Grant Sponsored by the Florida Department of Education. This grant will enable English for speakers of other languages, known as ESAL students, to learn English, obtain a State of Florida High School diploma, and find a career path, along with purchasing curriculum materials and supplies for academics. The next one is Item 10.4, Integrated Literacy... I'm sorry. Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education, known as the IELCE Grant Application for 2425. Marion Technical College Applied for the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Century Act Perkins Post-Secondary Grant, sponsored by the Florida Department of Education. The grant will enhance existing post-secondary programs offered at Marion Technical College, as well as students enrolled in the new aviation program. The funding will be used to hire an instructor for program startup preparation and travel by all staff, which included... or includes instructional support staff and administration. This will allow for training on any updated trends, policies, techniques, technologies, government bills, and statutes. This grant included the funding for the College of Central Florida Mid-Florida Career Pathway Consortium. The next one is, and the last one, Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Century ACT Perkins Post-Secondary Grant Application. So truly quite a commitment to career and technical education. Glad it looks like we're going to be having grants coming our way. All right, we will move on. I will have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C-12.1 through C-11.2, with the exception of Items D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, and D-24.11 that have been placed under discussion, and Item C-19.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion under Pulled Agenda Items. May I have a motion?
Chair, can we pull also Item 13.1? I believe that there's a conflict of interest for me.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize for not catching it sooner.
Okay, so we will add 13.1, and it sounds like Vice Chair Conrad will be recusing?
Yes.
Okay, 13.1. All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So may I have a motion on approval of our consent agenda items for this evening?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0.
Four-zero.
I mean, I'm sorry. Four-zero with Board... with Vice Chair Conrad recusing. Thank you. No? Something else?
I'm sorry. She didn't need to recuse herself from the consent agenda.
To discussion. Is that correct? Is that where we would approve... We would recuse the discussion?
Okay, so...
So move 13.1 to discussion.
To discussion. Yes, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. All right. So the consent agenda passed 5-0. All right, and you will be recusing later on 13.1.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May 8th, 2024. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the expulsion of student JD24-292E, JD24-296E, JD24-298E, JD24-301, JD24-302, JD24-303, JD24-305E, with educational services for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year and the entire 2024-2025 school year? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD24-297 with educational services for the remainder... for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first and second quarters of the 2025-2026 school year? May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. Thank you. We will move on to our discussion items now. May I have a motion to approve the Special Data Share Agreement with ClassLink Incorporated?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So with your consideration for this item tonight, Board, the cost for this item is $360,198, and this would allow for our district to continue to have the single sign-on, which is beneficial both for our staff and for our students, so they can access resources more efficiently. And I want to note that this is a three-year contract as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any questions or discussion from the board on this item? Okay, oh, go ahead.
I just have one comment. Thank you.
Yes.
And I will say that to Mr. Benvenuti. I am, as you know, also an employee of another local educational institution here in this community who does not have this same... It is very challenging to continue to sign-on repeatedly, repeatedly, and every student's are frustrated, faculty's frustrated, so thank you. Thank you that we have this. It's great.
Echo that, Mr. Benvenuti. Yes, time is money. All right, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the renewal agreement with Explore Learning LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad. Second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Certainly. Thank you again, Board. This item is at a cost of $250,000. It allows our schools to purchase software applications for mathematics for kindergarten through fifth grades. And even with the title, you may know it better as Reflex Math, which provides... One of the programs we have provides fluency for mathematics and skills for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? This item, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. Glad to have Reflex Math continuing. All right, next item is may I have a motion to pay international baccalaureate IB program fees?
So move.
All right, moved by Board Member Cummings, second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The cost for this item is $200,000, and this would allow our schools to purchase the international baccalaureate exams, training, program fees. And I want to note that it also includes South Ocala, which is a new program offered to... through our primary international baccalaureate program. So we're expanding this... the rigorous programs that are being offered even as early as elementary grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any... Is there any discussion on this particular item? Hearing none. I will just say that I continue to be thrilled with our IB program and the high-level academics we're able to offer, the, how the students have availed themselves of what it does offer and just the success that we've seen, you know, from the program. So if there isn't any further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve that TNTP Delaware Incorporated Special Data Share Agreement?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad, second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you. The cost for this is nearly $250,000. It's $249,999 to be exact, and this would allow for additional coaching support utilizing the school improvement grant funds to enhance our instructional reviews and support in our schools. This also extends into supporting our second language learners and our dual-language system that we're moving into in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion on this particular item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to utilize Florida Department of Education bid 2023-2 for the purchase of three new school buses?
motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, and Ms. Dobbinson is going to come forward and do some additional presentation on this, but I want to share, Board, that the cost for this is $464,622 to pay for three new 77-passenger vehicles, buses, for our students. And Ms. Dobbinson is going to provide the context behind why this is really unique and special. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. You want now?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Good evening, Board. Yes, this is exciting. So we have received the School Start Time Implementation Grant, which is just under the 500,000 mark, and this has afforded us to purchase three new buses with all needed equipment. Although three new buses cost slightly more than the grant, we will be utilizing the capital outlay for the remaining 17,410. And of note, we have an update of our buses that went to auction. That money rolls back into the capital, capital outlay, so it actually helps fund the remaining portion. So recently, we sent several buses to auction. We have received from that auction $15,318, of which two non-running buses sold for $600 and $800, and then we had five running schoolie buses sold. One sold for $3,250, and the other were four sold for $3,000. So a good example of sending buses to auction that actually turned out to offset the cost of this grant.
Fantastic. Any other comments or discussion or questions for Ms. Dobbinson?
I just have a comment. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Dobbinson. We know that transportation's been a challenge, and you continue to look for ways to help us move forward, and so I appreciate you and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, and I would just extend that to the department from me because it's a great team, and thank you for the support.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
So, just, just so everybody understands, I'm hoping everybody understands. So basically, we're getting three new buses. The majority of these buses are being paid for by a grant, correct?
All but $17,000.
And of that 17,000, 15 of that 17,000 came from us recycling or auctioning off?
That is correct, sir.
So basically, we're only paying about $1,500?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted the community to know that. That's good news. That's not bad news. Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I add on to that? Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson. Board, if you recall, some time ago, we've had conversations about how we utilize our property and part out, right? And we talked about how can we do this differently? So the schoolies is one new way to do that and capitalize on the current market, and if you haven't seen them or are familiar with them, that is a hot commodity right now for, for many who are looking for that, and we had buses that we had difficulty finding parts for. So this provided another way for our, for us to utilize our assets and get money from it a different way. So this is something that's unique for us.
Right, that's true.
And was successful.
Private may be able to wait a little longer for a part, but we simply can't. We have to keep our buses on the road. So I drive past Weeks Auction frequently, and I saw them all lined up there, and there's getting to be fewer and fewer of them, so they're selling, so that's pretty cool. So anyone that's interested in building themselves a schoolie, there's a few left. When is the next auction? It's coming up.
I don't have that date, but.
Yes, I think it's June 14, but don't hold me to it. But yes, it's, it's coming up pretty soon. All right. Anything else from the Board? This is fun. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right. Moving on, may I have a motion to utilize Osceola County School Board bid SDOC-24-B-094-ML Playground Equipment Surfacing Installation and Repair?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Thank you. Also important for our students, playground equipment at the cost of $450,000. And I think the title speaks for itself, equipment installation and repair of our playgrounds. Thank you.
Only $450,000 for a playground, but that's what it takes these days. Yes. Did you have something? Okay.
Wow.
Yes. Can't wait to see what the slide looks like.
Right.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right. May I have a motion to approve bid 4066 GM Audio and Video Equipment?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, I certainly do. The cost for this is $500,000. Mr. Ben Vinudy is going to come forward and share some additional context as to how we're utilizing this in our schools and what they'll, will supply and support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And here comes Mr. Ben Vinudy. With his technology in hand.
With technology in hand. Well, this is not one of the.
Only home without it.
This is not one of the items that's on the bid. We have televisions on there, audio, audio systems for classrooms. We have a lot of different systems that are used in classrooms. We have document cameras, and all these items are going to be purchased through this bid. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Vinudy. Is there any discussion or questions from the Board for Mr. Ben Vinudy? I'll just say that I know from visiting Vanguard High School and some of their classrooms that are so technology, you know, driven, and I know that technology moves quickly and becomes obsolete, and we're trying to keep up, you know, with industry with the most up-to-date programs, so when the kids move into jobs, they're familiar with the technology that's being used, so.
And it's important to keep these bids up to date because the technology does just change so rapidly.
Yes.
And if we don't do that, we're going to end up buying equipment that's out of date, so.
Correct. Well, thank you very much for staying so on top of it. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else? Yes?
Mr. Ben Vinudy, not to add anything else to your list of things to do, but I am interested in improving the audio equipment right here in MTI, so that's something I'd like to visit with you about to see if it's possible.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you for the work that you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. If there is no more discussion, we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. And I definitely support Vice Chair Conrad's request. You know, this is an old building, and, and we're doing the best we can, you know, with our sound systems, but if there's something that's more up to date that doesn't cost $500,000, hopefully, we can avail ourselves of that. Okay. We'll move on to have a motion to approve amendment number one to the construction manager contract guaranteed maximum price for labor and materials related to construction of a new 16-classroom addition at Liberty Middle School, which is project number 24-103. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Thank you. Just briefly, this, the cost of this is nearly $9.3 million, and this will, as you know, help us to relieve some localized overcrowding in the southwest area, specifically adding a, an addition at Liberty Middle School, which will allow for 16 classrooms to be added. And the expected completion of this is, expected completion is August of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the Board regarding this item? Yes, Board Member James?
Thank you. I know the Board received some information from Ms. Dobbinson today, so this may feel like a reiteration to the Board, but for transparency to the community, I wanted to share my notes on it as well. So on September 6, 2023, the committee selected CPPI or Charles Perry to build Liberty Middle School Wing. On October 10 of 2023, the Board approved the recommendation of the committee to negotiate the contract with CPPI for the project Liberty Middle School Wing. It was stated then that the Board would later see the official contract brought forward upon successful negotiation. On February 13, 2024, four months later, the Board was presented with item D19.8, which included in its narrative, and I'll read for quote. However, the school district was unable to successfully negotiate a contract with CPPI. CPPI estimated construction costs to be more than $9 million and proposed a fee of Both figures were significantly over the original budget, and negotiations could not bring the numbers close to the budget without significant deletions in size and scope of the project. After four attempts to negotiate a lower construction cost estimate and fee, the Facilities Department formally terminated negotiations due to the failure to lower the costs and the loss of time in getting a contractor on board in time for construction. Per Florida statutes and school board policy, the school district negotiated a contract with the second-highest ranking construction management firm, Welbro, instead. The negotiations produced a cost estimate for construction of $7,787,408 and a fixed construction fee of $350,298, both significantly less than the previous negotiations with the first contractor. 1.2 million lower cost estimate and 147,432 lower fixed fee. This recommendation is to approve the contract with Welbro Building Corporation for this project, end quote. Based on this narrative, the Board approved staff to proceed with negotiations with Welbro. Tonight, almost another four months later, and eight months since the initial approval, we are presented with this item. The max GMP for this item is $9,269,197, which includes a contractor fee of $350,298. Please note, the narrative we were presented with in February said the max cost for this project would be $7.7 million, and now it is $9.2 million, a difference of $1.5 million taxpayer dollars. While I was unable to get the estimated max GMP for CPPI from Ms. Dobbinson through email this week, she did share that their fee represented 5.75% of the total cost. While I'm not the best at math, I worked that out to be a negotiated max GMP of $8,656,173.91, which included a contractor fee of $497,730. While we would have paid a higher percentage in a fee, the max GMP was lower than the now max GMP with Welbro by $613,000. We would have spent less money to go forward with CPPI, and we would have already started the project months ago. In her email today, Ms. Dobbinson cited the rising construction costs as one of the factors for increased costs to build the wing and why Welbro had the max GMP at $9.2 million. Had we secured a contract with CPPI in the fall, we would have avoided these rising construction costs and potentially made up way more than $150,000 we are now saving, except I, I continue to reiterate, we are not saving $150,000 because we are spending up to 613 more, 100,000 more. In the same email, Ms. Dobbinson also cited the Board-approved fee. Attorney Powers, or Ms. Dobbinson, can you share what Board-approved item this is referring to? I'm not aware of the Board-approved fee being 4%, but instead, that being a best practice within the Facilities Department. Are you aware of a Board policy, Attorney Powers, that is about a Board-approved fee of 4% for construction projects?
I am not off the top of my head. No.
Dr. Gullett, is staff available to expand on that? Is that an, a Board-approved fee, or is that simply a best practice?
Madam Chair, I have to ask if Ms. Dobbinson has that information available. If not, we'll have to put the item and bring it back later. Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson.
May I clarify some information first? So when we negotiated with CPPI, they had an estimate GMP that I provided of 8.6, just over 8.6 million dollars. You derive the $9 million cost by adding their $497,000. Nowhere did I say that that cost was included in that 8.6 million dollars. As far as a 4%, that is the target best practice that we look for in negotiating contracts. When we do negotiate a contracts, we lock in the cost of the contractor. The GMP officially comes later. So CPPI, in this case, base their offer on their own derived GMP. Again, that did not include their fee. So when you add their fee to the 8.6, it is over $9 million.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson. I have a question too, because I received the same email, and it was referenced that the GMP is much higher than originally forecasted due to rising construction costs, but it was not stated, and I see this in the email, that there's also an additional cost that was added to the project. What's that all about?
So yes, so when we originally quoted the cost or the budgetary cost for this item, I believe it was May of '23. So the price that was originally listed way back when is over a year old. So in addition to looking at the 16-classroom, we also needed to look at the addition of covered outside dining to help support the cafeteria with enrolled, increased enrollment, which also added to the cost of the project. Yes, construction costs have continued to rise. We have 10 of 20 commodities that have increased over the months, the years. We have seen an increase in construction every month since January.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson. I can't remember right off the top of my head what it cost to add the covered dining to Fort King Middle School, but I, I know it wasn't cheap, and, and I don't want to quote a number because I simply can't remember, but kind of like the playground, I was astonished at how much it was. So, okay, that was the question I had.
Keep in mind, please, that there's also general conditions and contingency in any GMP, and if you'll recall, any unused funds returned to the district. So although this is our GMP, we suspect, and as we traditionally do, will receive back unused funds from this project.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinson. Vice Chair Conrad?
No, I was.
You had a question? Because this is under discussion.
Yes, I do not. I was just noting that.
Oh, okay, yes, I see, Dr. James.
So to that point, even adding the 500,000 to the 8.6, we're still at 9.2, which is the same price point we're at right now. And if that 9.2 from Welbro does not include their $350,000 fee, then that 9.2 is at 9.2, right?
Let me try to break this down. We are talking about the contractor's fee, not the GMP, because no matter what the GMP is today, Welbro will only make $350,298. Had we hired CPPI, no matter what the GMP would be today, we would have paid them almost half a million dollars. That's the bottom line.
And respectfully, Board, as a business owner myself, I want to get the job done efficiently, and I don't really, as long as the price is reasonable and within the industry expectations, I don't care if how much the contractor makes. I want the work to get done on time, and we are now eight months from the time that this was first presented to the Board, and we still haven't broken ground. And we're going to spend the same amount of money with Welbro that we started with, actually presumably more if we're going to take the 9.2, almost 9.3, to Dr. Gullett's point, and then add another 300,000. point, and then add another 350. We're looking at $9.6 million to build a project that out the door was going to be 9.2 with CPPI four months ago. And we could have already done that. And CPPI was the top pick for the committee and the top pick for the procurement process.
If I could add, the project was slated to be completed in August of '26, and that we are ahead of schedule.
So that's the same completion date?
Yes, if I recall correctly, I'd like to confirm that. But I think originally, when we went down this path, we targeted August of '26. We just happened to be able to go much faster because we own that design in a sense, because it's the same architect that built Liberty, and we are duplicating a wing. So that's how we were able to accelerate the project.
And that speed would have been duplicated regardless of the contractor. My point is, because of the nature of our climate currently attached to procurement of construction managers, my recommendation for the board is that we do not approve this amendment for Welbro. And if CPPI can build it for the same cost or less, then we should be going with the first pick, who, by the way, I'll note, is an out-of-town contractor. We should be going with the first pick because that is what the procurement process put forward to this board originally in October. We shouldn't be going with the second choice that is going to cost the district more money. It's our job as stewards over the money, and the taxpayers hired us, to look over the money, and we're going to spend more money with this route. So my vote is no. That is what I wanted to make sure that you all understood before we proceeded with this item.
Thank you. I have a question. With the first company, did that also include the covered dining? The price?
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
Any other discussion from the board?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Dr. James for bringing this forward as later in the agenda, we're going to discuss the procurement process, and we're waiting on a report to come back on that process. And so this, to me, just identifies that we still have room for improvement in working through these construction issues. So, thank you.
Can I say something here? I really don't understand.
Sure, absolutely. It's a discussion. Thank you.
How we're saying that it's costing us more when we are saving over 100 and something thousand dollars by going with Welbro. I just don't understand. The GMP is the GMP. The contract fee is what we are paying the construction company to build the wing. They have no incentive to have an inflated GMP. They don't earn any more money by saying the GMP is 9 million, 10 million, 20. They earn not a penny more. There is nothing wrong with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Any other thoughts from the board before we vote? Ready to vote? Yes? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Cummings, I didn't hear you. Nay, okay. So the motion fails two to three. All right. Moving on to item 24.9. May I have a motion to approve the Adult General Education, AGE, grant application 2024-2025?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you. The cost for this item, Board, would be about $609,539. This would allow, this grant would allow for our adults to, in our community, to obtain their GEDs at Marion Technical College. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion from the board on this? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right, may I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Citrus Levy Marion Regional Workforce Development Board Incorporated, doing business as Career Source Citrus Levy Marion, and the School Board of Marion County, Florida?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, this is a partnership, Madam Chair, with the Career Source, and they utilize our Brewster Hall at Marion Technical College. And so the use of the facility of an in-kind, excuse me, allergies are bad today, in-kind value of 200, I'm sorry, $2,531. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the board on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We'll go ahead and I just don't want to forget item 13.1 that Vice Chair Conrad needed to recuse herself from. Would it be appropriate to go ahead and do that now? Okay. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, I need to recuse myself for 13.1. The title of delegation of signing authority for Gary Smallridge, principal at Marion Technical College.
Okay. Vice Chair Conrad is going to recuse herself from this vote. Is there any discussion on this item further?
Motion to approve. Have we had a motion?
Motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 4-0, with Vice Chair Conrad recusing.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. All right. We will move on now to the discussion of the May 27, 2024 Gray Robinson Investigation of Complaint. Attorney Powers, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. As to the agenda item details with this agenda item, Gray Robinson PA was retained to determine whether there was any impropriety by the selection committee during the selection process and immediately following the selection process regarding the high school construction manager contract. As misconduct was alleged about the selection committee and a board member was on the committee, Julie M. Zolti, Esquire of Gray Robinson, conducted the inquiry and generated an investigative report, which is now attached to Board Docs as public record. Blower some of Attorney Zolti's concerns. Starting at the bottom of page 11 of the investigative report, it states, "My main concern with those who violated the cone of silence is with the members of Ausley Construction. Given the company's extensive experience in public procurements and the expressed disclaimer on bid announcement, the number of calls to various members of MCPS and the school board member on the procurement committee, despite knowing the cone of silence was in place, is a serious concern that jeopardizes the integrity of the process. Based on these findings, I recommend the school board take action as they deem appropriate." At the top of page 12, the investigative report states, "There was inappropriate influence by external entities to MCPS substantiated. There was inappropriate influence to change the scoring process internally at MCPS substantiated." Attorney Zolti recommends that the school board take action as they deem appropriate, and additional corrective actions are recommended within the report. What has been presented to you in the report addresses broadly three areas of possible action. Area one is as to the committee comprised of three types of personnel. Those are outside board members, a board member, and employees. Area two is as to bidders or applicants. And area three is as to selection criteria and the process. Now, as to area one, as to the committee, the report reviewed the question of whether there was impropriety among members of the committee during the selection process. The findings were essentially that no impropriety occurred as to the members during the scoring and selection process, but that afterward there were violations of board policy regarding the cone of silence. I will defer to the wording within the report, but it does not appear to attribute intentional wrongdoing to the committee members themselves. The report did describe actions of the board member on the committee, who first brought this to the attention of the superintendent, that could be described as unprofessional or uncivil. Board Policies 0123, Standards of Boardmanship, and 9380 Civility speak to those issues, but do not provide for enforcement action against a board member. In the opinion of investigator, quote, "There was inappropriate influence to change the scoring process internally at MCPS," and that a formal evaluation is not the proper channel to address these concerns and seemed to only further pressure Dr. Gullett into changing the procurement process going forward. The investigator further recommends, quote, "That the school board take action as they deem appropriate." The board member discussed in detail her comments regarding her evaluation scoring, and the board approved that evaluation on May 28. The board is without authority to suspend, remove, reprimand, or counsel a board member regarding potentially offensive harassing or bullying behavior, with a possible exception of addressing such issues in public discourse. The authority for any further action is solely vested in the office of the governor under Article 4, Section 7A of the Florida Constitution. As to area two, as to the bidders for the CM process, the report identifies actions by agents of bidders or applicants that presented issues of undue influence and violations of the cone of silence. Although the report focuses on applicant Ausley, on page five, there are also notes regarding conversations initiated by an agent of applicant Warden Smith. Board Policy 6334 speaks to prequalifications of contractors for educational facilities construction. Under suspension or revocation, it indicates that the board may, for good cause, suspend a contractor for a specified period of time or revoke the prequalification certificate. One of the reasons outlined is F, which points to the previous section, delinquency. Following that, subsection J under delinquency is violation of any school board policy, including violation of any staff-student interaction and drug policy. This would be one avenue potentially available to the board. Area three, as to the process itself, including the scoring criteria used, the outside counsel indicates that she does not recommend any substantive changes to the rubric, scoring criteria, local preference, or weight of equitable distribution for the new interviews for the high school contract. She also says, quote, "I do not express any opinions on how, if at all, these things should be changed for future processes, as this is outside the scope of my investigation." However, the district has also hired a consultant to generate a report with recommendations directly on this point. The consultant's report is expected on or about June 13. And this is me speaking. I cannot say what those recommendations will be, what recommendations will be given, or how they'll bear on any of these three issues for board review. Because of that, I also cannot recommend any specific action at this time. However, this is being brought to the board for your notice and your discussion, and to make sure that this is available as a forward-facing document for Board Docs.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. So just so I'm clear, in order to discuss this further, if the board wishes to, do we need to have a motion?
The board may engage in discussion, and then throughout that discussion, if the board intends to make a motion, a motion may be made.
Understood, okay, thank you. There was a lot presented just now by Attorney Powers, and I'm open to any board member that wishes to make a comment at this time.
Sure, I'll start.
Sure.
In area one, it was important to me that there, it was identified that we have room for improvement, that the code of silence was not discussed prior to the committee meeting or at the conclusion of the community committee meeting. And so that was a top priority for me in bringing in, talking about this agenda item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Any other discussion?
I have remarks.
Go ahead.
I want to, I want to point out, there is a note on page seven about a collaborative conversation that occurred between Gullett, Blackman, myself, and Powers, and that collaborative conversation never occurred. So I wanted to just make the record reflect that, and Attorney Powers would back that up, I believe.
I think that that was a, that statement seems to be a conglomeration from witness testimony of separate conversations that were had on the same topic. But I believe the report does erroneously state that there was a conversation in which all of us were participating at once, and that at least the implication is that, that was not the case.
Yeah, at no time did all four of us have a conversation at the same time. So I wanted to just make that record reflect that as an inaccuracy or erroneous, I guess, in the record of the investigative report. I want to speak to on page 12, the allegation of internal influence, which states that there was inappropriate influence to change the scoring process internally at MCPS, which was substantiated. As a reminder to all of Marion County, in 2018, this community voted with a 62% majority to transition from an elected to an appointed superintendent. In doing so, it has since been established that this board has two employees, the superintendent and the school board attorney. The superintendent works for us, the five school board members, and we, the board members, work for you, the community. Almost 45,000 voters in this county chose me to sit in this seat and represent your interests. When the word about the selection of the high school CCC construction manager got around, the community leaders, not Ausley Construction, contacted me. The community leaders had major concerns about our scoring criteria and processes. The community had concerns about Dr. Gullett's leadership during this process. I did not pressure Dr. Gullett to do anything. She could have very well proceeded in whatever fashion she wanted. I am just one board member. One board member has no power. She chose to halt the process because the board attorney provided three options of how to proceed, one being to halt completely. This was absolutely a her decision. As board members, we have every right to have a pointed and stern conversation with our employee. She was not forthright with me, and I was angry. My anger in a singular instance does not substantiate inappropriate use of influence. It just does not. And that is all the remarks I have for the investigative report.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from the board?
Chair, I'll make a couple of comments. So first of all, a couple of the policies that Attorney Powers referenced. Policy number 0123, standards of, standards for boardsmanship. Item H specifically says that board members will work with the superintendent, neither undermining nor intruding into the areas legally assigned to the school administration. And also Policy 9380, civility, which is something that we worked very diligently on, civility, conduct of district employees, parents and other visitors to school and school district facilities. While we worked very diligently on this in particular because of behaviors that were occurring in our schools where employees were being berated by parents and other members of the community, item B under unacceptable disruptive behavior includes using loud and/or offensive or demeaning language, swearing, cursing, profanity, or disruptive display of temper, and that we, as a board, determined is unacceptable and disruptive behavior. So just for the community's sake, he referenced a couple of policies. I wanted to say specifically what of those policies could be referenced in this matter. Because I was on the board when we had another investigative report of a board member conducted, that was a couple of years ago, I believe that the necessary action for us to do is just what we did with that, is just to submit it on to the governor and let the governor do whatever the governor's going to do. And frankly, he'll probably do exactly what he did with the last one and went into file 13. So I, I believe that we have gone through the work of having this done. We do obviously have another report that we're waiting on to talk specifically about the process, to speak specifically about what was done with the construction manager process. Cone of silence, I agree with Vice Chair Conrad that cone of silence was not discussed with committee members. However, every construction manager that has worked on government contracts for decades should be very familiar with cone of silence. And so while anyone on that committee may not have been aware, that is absolutely state statute. And so anyone who is doing work that is government-related should be very familiar with that. So at this point, all I see that my recommendation would be is to submit the investigative report as is to the governor and see whatever he wants to do with it. Because otherwise, it's just information. it's just information, and clearly there was a perceived justification for the need of this. And again, the superintendent saw fit, which is her legally assigned responsibility. She saw fit to have this investigative investigation done, and so that's what I see we should do with it.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm sure.
This is disappointing to me, and as I'm a big supporter of the code of civility, there was a lot of discussion about that. I do feel it challenging that it is something that our teachers and our administrators face every day. They, they face students that speak ill to them, and we have parents that speak ill to them, and we don't lawyer up. We sit down and we have conversations, and that's the expectation I have of this board moving, moving forward, is that we sit down and have conversations to solve problems so that we can do our job in representing the people of Marion County and to build schools for the 44,000 students that are overcrowded in Marion County, and for our staff and for our community, and work to solve this problem, setting aside some of the differences that we have, and get the work done.
Vice Chair, any other comments?
I guess I need to say something.
Go ahead and pull your microphone over then.
I guess.
Thank you.
When I look at all this, we got on the board to do what's best for kids, about helping kids be, become better academically, making sure our district is perceived in the best way, received in the best way, and I'm just gonna be, this has just become a distraction, a big distraction. There are some things that were done that should not have been done, but to be honest, which is time to move on. We wasting time on something that needs to be moved on. I'm not in favor of anything going to the governor, because I know what the governor gave us the last time, so I'm not in favor of that at all. So we need to, whomever have differences with each other, need to be adult and work those differences out, because that's what we would expect to happen in the school, and then we need to move on and get to the business of getting schools built. All this other stuff is just distractions, and to be honest with you, Nancy, when you and I came on the board, the board was uncivil, completely uncivil, and we need to be civil to get anything done. We were at a clip where we were moving in the right direction, getting things done, doing what was best for kids. Again, this is just a distraction, so we need to move forward. But I'm not in the recommendation of anything going to the governor. We should be able to handle our own stuff within the house.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. I'll just, I'll just first say that in the totality of all of this, I could not be more disappointed in a lot of what went down. You know, we sit up here week after week and go on and on about how people should be interacting with each other, and we are elected and we sit up here to be public servants and role models. And is it easy to do in the moment when you're really passionate about something? No, it's not. Is it always really easy in the moment to continue to do the right thing, even when you're looking at losing a lot of money and you're getting a ton of pressure from the community, what we call, continue to call the community, but I think we know who we're talking about? We need to be better, and right is right, and wrong is wrong. And we sent a report up to the governor that wasn't even substantiated. All that report said was that that board member was guilty of just globally not being all that easy to get along with, and abrasive, and using outdated language, and on and on. Now we're sitting here with a report that has substantiated allegations from what appears to be a Crackerjack attorney that was on Law Review at University of Florida. So I think about what messages it's sending to the community, that we send up one with less and we don't send up the other, that it's not my words, it's a professional that we hired, has more. You know, we don't have the authority to do anything other basically than, than what I just said. But I am very conscious of the example that we are setting for this community, and yes, Board Member Cummings, and how we interact with each other, how we meet our challenges, how we move forward. We, I can't sit idly by and accept and just say, well, we just need to move on from this. Yes, we definitely need to move on from this, but we also need to continue to set the example and not be hypocrites. So that is something that I'm very passionate about and, and concerned about, because this, it's my way or the highway mentality is not how a board functions well together. And the actions that we take define us as a community. I'm not out to chop anyone's head off. I think that there's probably a lot of regret over some of the ways allegedly things were handled, including to me personally. I've never been the kind of person that hasn't been approachable. Talk about, let's have a conversation, and I'm also very compassionate. You know, when I see what other people seem to be put up to doing, and I don't think it was the first time, I can still have compassion for those people. I can legit be threatened by somebody without being intimidated, because I'm always going to stand for what's right. I'm always going to look to the future to make things better, and to continue to do my level best as an individual board member to exemplify the values that we say we have and the commitment statement that is nothing better than words on a paper if we don't back it up with our actions. So that's where I am with this. I will also say that the consultant's report is expected on or about June 13th. We don't know what's going to be contained in that report to bolster or change anything. And since we're paying for it, I am not ready to send anything anywhere till we have the full information that we have asked for, that Dr. Gullett has asked for, that we have paid for. But I will say this. It's not, make no mistake, it's not kicking the can down the road. It's because, in my mind, it's important to have all of the information before weighing in on such important issues, concerns, and substantiated allegations. So in summary, I'm not ready to move forward with any specific action at, at this time, but I will be ready once that report has been released and we give the public time, the right amount of opportunity for it to be posted, results of that, and then I'll be ready to come back and make, just have discussion, further discussion, and, and make decisions, and truly, truly, in the end, be better for this. That's what I have.
And I will just conclude with, there is no assigned action to this item tonight. In other words, you're not being called on to vote on anything. However, it does remain within your ability to comment, discuss, as you have, to reach consensus, or make a motion related to the report, or potential action if you see fit. From my input at this time, no action is legally required, but the board may still choose to initiate some action or defer to a later date, as you just indicated. The investigative report gave its factual findings and largely left action within the discretion of board without a recommendation as to what specifically to do. So I will be prepared for the board's further direction after that report has come from the consultant and is presented to you by the superintendent.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Is there any more discussion on this topic? Okay. All right, we will move on to the pulled agenda item, may I have a motion to approve the administrative personnel items 2023-2024 fiscal year? May I have a motion, please?
Remove.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. James, you pulled item C. nineteen point one, and would like to have further discussion.
Yes, thank you. Just a few clarifying comments and remarks. So according to the investigative report on May 7th, Mr. in quotations, Mr. Ausley emailed Mr. Knight, Mr. Roby, and Ms. Dobbins concerning the negotiations for the proposed fee on the elementary school X project that Ausley Construction had been awarded in August of 2023. In his email on May 7th, Mr. Ausley expressed Mr. Knight's conduct during the negotiation process constituted improper bid shopping and potential illegal coercion, end quotes. On May 17th, we were contacted by Dr. Gullett regarding the non-reappointment of a member of the facilities department. During that brief 60-second conversation I had with her, Dr. Gullett would not share who the member of the facilities department was, nor the reason for the non-reappointment. We now have a resignation from the supervisor of facilities. My question to Dr. Gullett or Ms. Morant is, is this the same individual who was non-reappointed?
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's not appropriate to discuss personnel matters. Can't discuss the details of personnel items.
So I, and to expand, I ask because the investigative, the investigative report found regarding the allegation of bid shopping to be unsubstantiated, and they found no issues within the facilities department, as you've noted. So why was there a non-reappointment from the facilities department if, in fact, there was no findings of impropriety or malfeasance from the facilities department? And so my question would stand, and the reason this was pulled was because I want to understand if, if this is the same person, or if there is a different person who has been non-reappointed in our facilities department. And if it can't be answered on record, that's fine, but I do think it's important to have that transparency of understanding, is this the same or different person from the resignation packet? So that's all I have.
Thank you. It's my understanding that anyone in administration is an at-will employee and can be terminated for any reason or no reason at any time, so in my mind, while it would be, there's a piece of me that would like to know, sure, you know, but it's really not something that is our purview to know, according to my understanding of what the law is, am I on the right track here?
And our policy, sorry, Chair.
Yes, and our policy.
That specifically says that we will work with the superintendent, neither undermining nor intruding into areas legally assigned to the school administration, which personnel is.
Correct. And we have an investigative report that was brought to the board that encompasses the work of the facilities department, specifically procurement, which the individual who's in our resignation report was supervising, as the supervisor of the facilities department. And so he has since resigned with the date at the end of this fiscal year. And so to understand our way of work, I'm looking to better understand if this is that same person that she called us about on May 17th, or if that is a different person, so that we can best understand how that work in that, in that department is going to move forward.
And I think having, having made your request, and also having heard the superintendent's answer at, at this point, I would advise board members not to inquire further.
That's fine, and I don't need an answer. That's fine. That's a, that's a substantive answer. That's fine.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Okay, moving on to board committee reports and concerns. This is just a little different for me. I'm just gonna lead this off based on some consent agenda items. Two weeks ago, you may recall, one by one, we discussed and then ultimately approved all of the local therapy providers for students with special needs that require therapies for such things as speech language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, deaf and hard of hearing, and it was important, I thought, to have that be publicly facing because of the amount of money and the fact that, you know, it's, it's a mandate, you know, that if it's on the individual education plan, we are obligated to provide these services. And very thankfully, we have a lot of local small business owners that are willing to do that at a very high level of skill. Tonight's consent agenda items, to save us all from going through that all over again and being repetitive, included 35 more contracts for therapeutic services benefiting students involved in our exceptional student education program. These contracts include therapies for speech, language, physical, occupational, and deaf and hard of hearing. Combined, they have a value of $3,083,421.50. And these particular contractors include Amy LC White LLC, Bilingual Bridge Therapy LLC, Chrysalis Physical Therapy LLC, Danielle Sanchez, LLP LLC, Hello Sunshine Speech Therapy LLC, Independence Therapy Services Incorporated, Julie Griffiths, SLP LLC, Kelly Shute Incorporated, Lanier Speech and Language Services Incorporated, Margaret Tiner LLC, Michelle Kalos, PTP LLC, NMK Therapy LLC, Oasis OT LLC, The Whole Person LLC, Amahouse Occupational Therapy LLC, Top Water Building Solutions LLC, Achievement Therapy LLC, Bathesties LLC, Brenda L. Day Incorporated, Brenda M. Collins, PTP LLC, Current Speech Therapy Resources LLC, Cynthia B. Long, OTR Incorporated, Dyslexia Central Florida LLC, Holly K. Rubin, SLP LLC, Jewel Marin, OT LLC, Kylie Wyatt LLC, Linguic Corp., ON Therapy LLC, Pivot Rehab LLC, Progress Therapy Incorporated, PSB, SLP LLC, Schroder Communications LLC, Stephanie M. Wright Incorporated, Sunbright Speech and Language Therapy Incorporated, Thornel PT for Kids LLC. So all of these providers, we approved in the consent agenda tonight to the tune of over $30 million to include these vital services for our students. And I will also say that there was a student that's gotten a lot of press yet in social media and in the newspaper, young Mr. Lobdus, and that is going to the Navy and, and doing a very special program this summer, and I thought to myself, that name sounds really familiar. Well, as it turns out, his brother Marcos is a proud graduate of Hillcrest School, so that just goes to show you the breadth of students that we serve, and probably why it costs so much, because when you're looking to meet the needs of each and every child, that's exactly what we're here for. That is, will always be my focus. So I might have a few more things to say after that, but I'll go ahead and, and start with the rest of the board comments and concerns as we typically do. After a couple of reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for June 20th, 2024, where we will be discussing our legislative priorities for coming up, because we know we like to be active in the summer and, and begin to get that ball rolling, and we already have some invitations from legislators, so that's a good feeling. There's a special school board meeting scheduled for July 11th, 2024, at 7:30 a.m. The following administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for July 11th, 2024. All right, Ms. Martinez, anything from your seat?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, anything from your seat?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. I was wondering about the update on impact fees. We had had a little conversation about that, where we are with collections and getting that going.
I received from Mr. Mentor on yesterday, the attorney for the county, a clean copy of revisions that were to be made to the collection agreement. It is in keeping and comports with the interlocal agreement. We had some discussion regarding, after- We had some discussion regarding after collection of the impact fees. The city apparently does not place the impact fees that it collects in a, in an interest-bearing account. Mr. Mentor's checking, he believes that they have not traditionally done that either. And in the future, that may be something that we wish to revise to ensure that it's an interest-bearing account, much like they have for trusts for lawyers. I mean, when, you know, there's an, an interest-bearing account tends to have the ability to, to have that money compound and grow somewhat during that time period. So wanted to make it clear to the board that as, as at this point, there does not appear to be any indication that, that, that it would be held in any interest-bearing account, nor that any one party would be getting, you know, the interest proceeds. Now, in the future, there may be some, some decision to hold it in an interest-bearing account collectively, and if so, to, you know, share among the members, the collection, those responsible for collection and the school board, or to direct those to the school board. That is not a conversation that's occurred at this point. But at this point, what I can tell you is that they're not being held in an interest-bearing account. And that was one thing I looked into to make sure that, that if there was an interest-bearing account, that that would be something that we were able to receive the benefit of for the continued growth of schools.
Even at the safest, safest account, that still is bearing a decent amount of interest in, we're not talking chump change here. So I'm actually pretty surprised and, and that that just has never been encountered or discussed or codified anywhere. To me, as a, in terms of fiscal responsibility, why wouldn't we be asking for that? And, and same thing, you know, with the county with their impact fees and anyone else, that, that's almost astonishing. So I would love to see that conversation expedited, and I'd also love to get an estimate of the money we would be losing by not doing it. As a, as a fiscal agent, that to me just seems like a no-brainer. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Board Member, Superintendent Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a few updates. You know, it's interesting that even, even now, a lot of our community members will say, you know, what's happening in the summer, things slow down and, and people all take off and, but I want to highlight a couple of things that are happening because our, our folks are hard at work. And we have students in summer school, as you know. We have, we have nearly about 4,500 students that are participating in summer school. I was by one of our sites today and, and great turnout, great responses, talked to some of the teachers. So thanks to everyone who is supporting our summer school, our teachers, our administrative teams, and, and everyone who's there, our food service departments, and also our custodial staff, all support staff that are there. I also want to do a special shout out to IHMC, the Institute for Human and Machine Cognition. I popped in yesterday. A group of our teachers very dedicated to once again hosting with this great partnership, the Ocala Film Derby, which will occur in, in September, and it really provides our students access to experts in this field. And so through those, those partnerships and through the dedication of our teachers working on this, our students get really unique hands-on learning opportunities right here in our community. So, and they learn to how to collaborate with, with peers that they've not worked with before. So I want to thank, I want to thank them again. Today had an opportunity to go and welcome and kick off the multilingual interdisciplinary training. They're talking about, it's called Smile. And so a lot of teachers and staff there and even school leadership teams there and committed to times over two days and learning how to support our growing community of second language learners, our multilingual students. And so really appreciative of their commitment, their focus. They brought in some experts in the field and they were very engaged and very upbeat and so really appreciate their commitment during, during these, these summer times. I also have a request, board, for consideration. I have a request from the Student Discipline Department. We have nine students that are, have submitted paperwork to be considered for early reentry. And so, yes, it's a great, great request. And it has been proposed that if we could do those together, like we've done in the past, I think this past December, we did those together in a bunch, that was more productive in our time. If we, a couple of options and certainly open to others, but one, one recommendation was July 8th in the morning, beginning at 8 o'clock. But also notice that July 9th, the next day, we have a board meeting already scheduled. So open that up for suggestions and recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I will say, looking at my calendar, the 8th in the morning does not work for me, but I am definitely available and would much prefer doing it on the, the 9th, when that way staff's going to be here anyway.
Agreed. Agreed, Chair.
Yes, is there a way we could just start the board meeting an hour and a half early or something like that? Is that a possible, instead of doing it in the morning and then in the afternoon? And just allotting time ahead of the 5:30 start board meeting to do the?
That's what I was thinking, like start at, we, we have nine, so we definitely want to give ourselves, it's going to be at least 15 minutes each.
Yeah.
Transitions. So yes, that was, that was my line of thinking as well. Not do it in the morning, do it in the afternoon. Yeah.
I agree. I think because the board's already coming, you're coming that, that evening, I would allow enough time for that because they were thinking eight to 12. I don't know that it'll take that long, but we need to allow time for our families to come in, so.
So can we do it like 2?
2 o'clock would be.
2 o'clock? And then that way, if we get a little bit of a break before the board meeting, it's, I'd appreciate that, as Chair.
Yeah, I mean, that's still only 20 minutes per with nine. So if we wanted to be a little bit more, we could just start at 1, like after lunch, and, and then go until we're done. I, I just would hate to, I don't know how time certain 5:30 is for a board meeting start, but I find it to be pretty time certain. So I wouldn't want to run in and, and with nine, that would only leave 20 minutes per early reentry, so.
Yeah, I was thinking 15, but that was probably ambitious. It's, it's a positive time, so they could go a little faster.
Yes, and I mean.
But 1 is fine.
I, I think, I think that it would be fine, but I certainly wouldn't want to fall short, so.
Right, right. Well.
I'm personally available the whole day, so I can come as early as needed.
Yeah. How about 1:30? Do I hear 1:30?
1:30 is great.
Okay. 1:30.
Thank you. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gullett.
Attorney Powers, are you available?
I, I'm just making sure, yeah, that's, so afternoon of the 9th, starting at 1 o'clock.
Correct.
I'm blocking it off.
Okay. And a calendar invite, I'm sure, will be forthcoming.
Yes, it will. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Board Member James, would you like to go?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Ayers for his email yesterday regarding hearing the rezoning conversation start for the July 11th meeting. I'm looking forward to hearing that. We have three upcoming work sessions this summer. We don't have them as frequently, so we have one next week, June 20th, and then July 11th and August 1st. We already have spoken about the, the, why is the word escaping me? The report that's being done with regard to the processes and procurement. I'm wondering if the board would like to pick one of the three dates this summer to have a placeholder on for the agenda so that we could plan ahead to ensure that we're making adequate time to talk about that item? Or do we want to plan an additional work session to address that item?
I didn't hear the first part of what you said. Is the?
The consultant's report, yes. That's supposed to be coming by the end of this week, so it, we may not have it ahead of proper publishing for June 20th. And I don't know what the agenda looks like for July 11th, but my question to the board would be, would it be possible for us to consider adding it to the July 11th board meeting so that we could?
Have it as?
Have it placed so that we at least have a plan?
Yep. I think that would be important.
Yes.
Yep. So we can add it as a placeholder and?
And, and that's for the special board meeting as opposed to the work session? Are, are we wanting to have it as a work session topic, or are we wanting to have it as a board meeting topic?
Oh, a work session. I think it needs to be a work session.
I would like a work session also.
Okay.
But the July 11th is a work session, right?
It is.
It is?
But we also have a special board meeting that day, so that's what I was clarifying.
Oh, yes. No, I was requesting it be on the work session agenda.
Okay.
The other thing that I'm wondering, if we would be able to possibly here on an agenda upcoming, Attorney Powers is waiting for the third appraisal to come back. We had our leasing corporation meeting about listing the warehouse. Is it possible that we could placeholder an update either for June 20th or July 11th regarding that?
Yes, we have it. I just have to check on, on John's availability, so.
Okay.
We, we have the third appraisal, and I just have to make sure of his calendar availability for that.
Okay.
If not, I don't want to eat into a lot of other things that we have on that time because I wanted to make sure we have time to address things as the board needs with Mr. McGraw. So the 20th is what I'll shoot for, and if not, then I'll either set a special meeting or I'll add it to one of the meetings immediately following.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, I don't know, we were at FSBA Summer Conference last week, and I don't know which board. I know that Reverend Cummings and I sat in a session together about onboarding new board members, and we're in an election season. So I found it to be pretty beneficial and in that, did, I don't know if, did any of the rest of you sit in that session? So there was a procedure manual shared with us independently that I had our board clerk print and I could have her distribute via email to all of us. I would love to see the board come, have a work session before November on developing a procedure or duplicating this procedure handbook from Pinellas County regarding onboarding new board members. Reflecting back on my experience two years ago, coming on with Ms. Conrad, there are just some things that I feel like lessons learned that I would, I would love to be able to provide if there is a new board member joining the board in November. And we may not have a change in the board at all, but I would love to be best prepared for that. And so having a work session at some point before November to address that and before the election, I would like to be able to do that as a board. Reverend Cummings, I don't know if you have anything you want to add about that since you were in there with me, but I did find a lot of value in it. And Carol Cook, who's now, I believe, working for FSBA, is the one whose county it came from. And so potentially, Ms. Chair Thrower had mentioned, maybe we could do a master board training with it and maybe not do a work session with it. I just think it would have value, so whatever the board's purview on that would be.
Thank you, Board Member James. I think it's a great suggestion. I, I would say that it wouldn't be anything we'd really need staff for, so doing it as a master board training, I think, would be great. And I would love for Carol Cook to do it because she is, she's been in Pinellas County, what, 22 years? And apparently they have a model of a manual, so why not see what they have to say about it? We can modify it as, as we see fit. I did take the liberty of texting Carol a little bit ago before the meeting started, and she said she'd be thrilled to do it. So I'll go ahead and follow up on that, and we'll get something scheduled.
Yeah, and then maybe just collectively, the five of us can choose some dates for that.
Right.
And we don't have, there's no rush, really, but I just think before November would be good, so we at least are prepared in the case we have new board members joining the board.
Absolutely. Good idea.
That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. All right. Board Member Cummings? Okay, thank you. Board Member Campbell?
Sure. I wanted to first say Florida School Board Association Conference last week was, was great. There were a couple of things that I gleaned from that that I was unexpected, I guess you could say. One of them, we were given the teaser that there would be a big announcement coming, and it came yesterday from the governor. And, and it was that he has approved money for teacher salaries specifically. For anybody who saw that announcement and has seen that information out there, he has approved money in the budget. We don't know what that looks like yet. So please, we know that there is money in the budget specifically for teacher salaries, but we do not know what that means yet. It was a great announcement. We're excited for it. So looking forward to how we'll get information down from Tallahassee as to how that will need to be distributed. Also wanted to say congratulations to Reverend Cummings for once again being, or for being reelected to the Florida School Board Association Board of Directors, as well as his vice chairmanship of the advocacy, advocacy committee. And the only other, well, I, I also wanted to mention that we, as a board, I think this was something that Chair Thrower might have brought up, but we, as a board, it is time for us to select our advocacy representative from the board. So I have been serving in that role. I am happy to serve again and continue in that capacity. If that is consensus of the board, we just have to have that conversation collectively, so.
We need an answer by August 24th.
I, I, I could think that we should just leave Ms. Campbell there. She's passionate about it. Let's move on.
I, I support that. You, you are the resident expert, so I have no reason in disrupting that. Okay, terrific. So done deal, we'll, we'll send that on, and Vice Chair, or excuse me, Chair Thrower has been serving as the alternate. We're okay with that consensus? Okay, good. We'll just keep things the way they, we'll keep things the way they are on that. We are needing to discuss our legislative priorities, and so originally, FSBA will be sending us on August 1st is when they will be sending out their request for legislative priorities. And originally, I was thinking, okay, maybe we can have that in a work session later in the summer, maybe after August. I do want to make the board aware that we've already had a local legislator in our delegation request to have a meeting with us. And so we might need to have a conversation about what our priorities are in advance of anything like that because we do essentially kind of at least come to consensus or vote on those priorities. And so I don't think it would be fair for one of us to go without all of us weighing in on what that would be. So perhaps, I don't know what these work session agendas are going to look like this summer, but we probably need to have the conversation sooner rather than later. I was thinking we could hold off until August, but with this request from a legislator, I want to make sure that we see who all we can see. And then August 20th, we probably will know who some of the other legislators will be. Some of those seats may be decided on that date as well. And so we have a couple of open seats and a couple that will, Representative Chamberlain, I don't think, has opposition right now. So there, there will be a couple, we believe, will probably stay put, and then there will be some that we need to possibly meet and engage with. So Dr. Gullett, if you'll just figure out, I don't know if June 20th works or not, I, whatever all is on that agenda for June 20th. Again, I'd originally asked the team, let's put it in August, and then now I'm like.
Let's do a June 20th would be my preference and come to the, come to that work session with some ideas, you know?
I know, I already have several, but please, come with ideas of things that you've been hearing or things that other folks have been telling you that might be good for us to put forth. Attendance certainly will continue to be at the forefront. Hopefully, we can get that over the finish line this year. But as we talk about that in June, just looking forward to continued collaboration and dialogue. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I know we're kind of talking on, on really positives there and things that the legislature's going to be able to do. I do want to express my mild disappointment, or maybe it's a strong disappointment, but just the disappointment in the process on these construction projects. I know tonight, we rejected one, and obviously, we know that the high school is going to continue to be delayed, and, and I, I understand that. The report we're waiting on, hopefully coming in the next couple of days, will help us secure how the procurement process and the construction manager selection process needs to be solidified a bit more. But I want to say, this individual board member is completely prepared to have a special school board meeting anytime over the summer, so we are not delayed any more than we already are. So if it's not already on the calendar and we have something that we could get done in June or in July, let's make it that happen so we can get ground broken on all of these different construction projects that we just continue to delay. And I understand it feels like kicking the can down the road. It's not what it is, but we need to get stuff moving that we've already approved to move. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of things I want to share. I also, too, walked away with some great insight from FSBA. And one of the things was the opening speaker, Greg Offner. He was a piano player and singer, and so I sure would love to have someone of his caliber come and open up the school year for us here in Marion County. It was very positive. It was very uplifting. It was very motivational. And years ago, we did have opportunities like that where we gathered as an entirety, as a staff, to kick off the school year. And so as I sat and listened, and I was inspired by his message, I could see something like that coming to Marion County and thought it would be extremely beneficial as we continue to work to increase the morale and recruit and retain our staff. It would be such a positive way to start the next school year. Another takeaway from that conference was, and I asked, actually asked Chair Thrower to go to the session after I left because she has so much more experience than I do, but the CEO of the Orlando Regional Realtors Association, his name is Cliff Long, did a fantastic presentation on how their community is working together so well to move their public schools forward. And it was also inspiring and motivating. And I know we have people in the community that can help us with that. And so, it's just, I asked him, I said, do you have, I waited after and said, do you have this presentation? Can you share it with us? He did not. So, I'm in the process of making contact with him to see if that's some of the information he can share with us and help us move forward in building community relationships as we move forward in building schools. I wanted to thank Chair Thrower for your, for you sharing all of the special things that we vote on and approve to help our students because it's a big lift. We provide a lot of services for a lot of students. And I just think it's so great to share again what those are and what we do to meet the needs of all the students in Marion County. And lastly, I just, I want to share, I want to end with a little word of encouragement. There are words that have been shared many times. At least, I've heard them here and I've heard them out in the community. And just to remember that each board member and each staff member brings unique skills and talents and differences to the board table. In the past two years, this has been a benefit to this district and the success of the projects that we've tackled. Let's continue to do our best to work for the 44,000 students, 6,000-plus staff, and members of the community to get this job done. And so, I just want to thank everybody for their commitment, for their work right here in Marion County. And I look forward to being part of the solution as we move forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. I would like to start by just echoing how productive and uplifting FSBA was this year. I felt like it really was one of the most productive and motivational conferences that, you know, they've always been good, but this one did take it to the next level. And I do remember all gathering together in fellowship before the school year started and kicking it off. And we're so much bigger now, it gets harder to find a venue as we continue to talk about it, if there was only a venue. I don't know if WECC would be willing to accommodate us in a charitable sort of way, but it sure would be great, you know, to gather as a full group and team to kick off the school year. So, maybe there'll be a way to make that happen. And I'm just going to touch very briefly on it because I have several real positive things I want to share. But, you know, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, sometimes there's skeletons in a closet that just need to be brought out, you know, and so that they can be put to rest. And that's what leadership is all about, you know? Leadership is acknowledging the challenges, not hiding from them, and then, and then finding that way forward that improves things. And so, I am looking forward already to, as Board Member Cummings said earlier, you know, I want to get past this as much as anyone, but it's going to require regrouping. And it's important, you know, to be courageous and just publicly find a way forward for our community. This community, it's no secret, is growing by leaps and bounds. There's a lot of stressors out there on everybody and what their vision is. But we're the ones that were elected to work together across all of our elected officials. And so, the more positive communication we have, the more good, the more good faith effort we make, the quicker and the better our results will be. So, I look forward to the continued conversations and continuing to work with this board to lead us forward. I had just such a neat experience today, and it reminded me all over again of why we do what we do. I continue to share how wonderful the Mary Seirich Community Center is and how it's already done such a wonderful job of bringing people together from all walks, from all talks, all ages, you know? I see the Marion Transit come in there and the ladies come in. I think they're playing bridge. I'm not sure what they're doing, but they look like they're having fun. Yes. And then today, I try to get in an hour of pickleball here and there, horseback riding whenever I can, it's good for my head.